To the Willis City Council order for November 9th. Join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with its standing hands, one nation under our law, in the middle of the world with liberty and justice.
Kathy, let's see who's here.
Okay.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Madigal.
Yes.
Warrenstein.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Yep. First item this evening is public communications. Do we have anybody like to address the council on issues not on the agenda and turn off your cellphone? No action will be taken. Try and keep it to about three minutes. Second, third, and last call, public communications, non-agenda items. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. Motion on the consent calendar?
I so moved.
We're gonna pull a matter, aren't we?
We're pulling items E and F for...
Oh, that's, okay. So we're looking at A, B, C, and D. Is that what you meant, Larry?
Yep. That's exactly what I meant.
I knew it. I knew it.
I'll second that. You want some later?
Is there any public discussion on the consent agenda, which is via a couple radios and engineering contract? Spending your money, seeing none, how about a roll call vote then?
Yes, no comment.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Madigal.
Yes.
Warrenstein.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes. So, if we've done anything to upset you so far, persons are dissatisfied with the decision, city councils generally have a right to review that decision by a court. Cities adopt 1094.6 of the Civil procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within cities, the decisions a city council may be judicially challenged, so consult your attorney. We need to recess as the planning commission, I mean, excuse me, as a city council and sit as the planning commission for the next item.
Bruce, may I interrupt just for a second? I don't believe I got the minutes of October 26th, so...
I emailed them.
Email them, okay, well, that's my good luck.
All right, well...
Bruce? I have to excuse my cellphone on this one.
Can you explain that, Larry?
Yes, because my son is the property owner of this.
This is a different item, I think.
No, this is that item.
No, we're not taking the other...
We're the planning commission.
The other two items that were polled are not on the agenda at all.
We're pulling them off of the agenda.
Oh, gee, gosh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're with us now?
I am, I'm just bearing.
So, um, so the, what's the, what's the ruling on, a conflict on that?
The ruling is that if a council member or immediate family member of a council member would have a, if the decision before the council would result in a materially significant financial impact on the council member or his immediate family member, then the council member should recuse themselves.
Is it 500 feet?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure I got one within 500 feet. Might even have two.
Well, so the question is, does the conditional use permit action that might be taken tonight, could that result in a material financial impact to you or immediate family member?
Those are always hard to gauge, but I have a stepdaughter that has an adjoining property as a renter and a son that owns a house, which I'm sure is within 500 feet.
Well, so that, that may or may not have an impact on your son, and so if you think that it does, you should recuse yourself.
I have not a clue. So I'm gonna recuse myself in the abundance of caution, not, not an issue that is, anyway.
It's us, kid. Familiar redundus.
Right.
Okay, so this is item number 7A, discussion of possible action on conditional use permit application for Suprema Rodriguez. And I guess Dusty, this is your show?
Yeah, we got a brief presentation for you. Suprema Rodriguez is the applicant. She's requesting a use permit to allow for the use of existing approximately 1,300 to put single-family home and convert it to an after-school program cabinet to assist up to 30 elementary-age children. Requested hours of operation on Monday through Friday from 2:30 PM to 6:00 PM, with the exception of school holidays where hours will be extended from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. This project site is, is on the south side of West Mendocino Avenue, approximately 150 feet west of its intersection with North Street located at 265 West Mendocino Avenue. We've received two letters from the public, which the council has. One is from Jovi Doggy Wattenberg, who is a neighbor to the residence and is concerned about a shared fence that's between her property and the project site, and I'll speak about that in our presentation. We also received an anonymous letter that was hand-delivered, I believe, on November 8th, with a number of concerns, including traffic, parking, water and sewer, land use compatibility, alternative sites that, that might be more appropriate, and I will speak to those in the report, to most of those water use and sewer. You know, our, our water and sewer department did review the project and did note issue. There isn't an onsite septic system that would be overloaded. This would be go to our, our sewer plant and we have capacity to support additional sewer use. With that, I'll go ahead and start the brief presentation for you guys. Just a couple more details on the project. According to the applicant, a teacher will be walking children from the nearby Brookside Elementary School to the project site Monday through Friday. This project is located primarily in a single-family residential neighborhood. There is a school, there is a church, there's a couple of real estate offices scattered within, but it's certainly primarily a, a single-family residential neighborhood. Our zoning does allow for this type of use, provided a use permit can be obtained from the council. The technical advisory committee was able to review the application back on September 28th. We did note a couple issues. The fire department noted some standards and some upgrades that need to happen to bring the property into compliance with fire code, fire extinguishers, smoke alarms, et cetera. Building code, building official noted some improvements that need to be completed to bring the property to the proper occupancy, as well to meet, as well as to meet ADA standards. As far as planning goes, the one issue that we noted was parking, and I'll get into that very briefly. This is a view of the project site from West Mendocino Avenue. That is Suprema's motorcycle in the front, I believe, not positive. I also wanted to note that we will not be recommending any streets becoming one-way as part of this project, that's another fun little fact. You can see there is some parking in the driveway, that is a single car garage that you see there, so there's approximately three, three parking, off-street parking sites on the project site. Our parking code is, does not prescribe parking standards for this type of use. In that situation, the parking code tells you to default on the standard of one off-street parking place per 300 square feet of usable area within the building. In this case, that results in five parking spaces. I think I noted in the report that in my site views during afternoon hours, there does appear to be adequate off-street parking in the neighborhood. Certainly those living in the neighborhood might have a better sense of that than I did based on my few site visits, but to meet the letter of the code, we're looking at providing five off-street parking sites. Again, we have three here. I became aware that the applicant's residence is approximately 250 feet to the west of the project site. The code does allow for off-site parking within a certain distance, I believe it's 600 feet. If we go to the front of that residence, this is again about 250 what, feet west of the project site, this is the applicant's residence. They have room for four, four parking spaces there. A single-family home would require two, but there is two additional parking spots available. With the three at the project site and the two at the residence, there is an opportunity to meet the parking standards per the letter of the code. If you look at condition number, number one, condition number one seeks to memorialize a parking agreement and have the applicant direct parents that are picking up their kids to utilize those, those parking spots. So that was our solution to, to come up with the five off-street parking spaces as required by the letter of the code. Again, there appears to be plenty of off-street parking in the area, so maybe it's not a real need, but this allows us to, to avoid having to get a variance and continue this matter to a later day. What else do you want to say on that? So according to the applicant, the pickup times are a little bit staggered, and so you might not see parents of, of each kid coming at us at the same time. That might be staggered over a few hours. Also should point out that although the applicant's asking for 30, up to 30 elementary kids to be able to utilize the after-school program, based on occupancy requirements and the actual size of the structure, it may be that fire code prevents that many kids from being able to be present in the building at one time. So Little Lake Fire District is looking into it and will establish an occupancy requirement, and that may be less than 30 kids that, that's being requested. And that's captured in condition number five over here. Excuse me, condition number six.
Dusty, if I have questions, you want me to wait till the end?
Anyway, I've probably got a couple more minutes. The, the neighbor was able to come and talk to me a couple days and make me aware of the fence situation. I went ahead and, and with the applicant's permission, went into the backyard and there is, this is a common, you can see that it's, it's leaning over into the, the project site backyard. I wasn't able to go on the other side of the fence. I'm not sure what's causing it to lean. It may be that the supports are starting to fail. It may be that there's something on the other side that, that's pushing it that way. But the concern was, is this is gonna be an activity area for the kids at times, and there was a concern that the kids may try to get up on that fence, and if it's not sturdy enough, it could create a hazard. This, there's not too much...
What about the other fences?
Everything else looked fine in the backyard, yeah. It was just this one. So you can see, you know, they've been creative and been able to put a brace up between the fence and the house to support it, but staff's recommending that we go a little bit further and, and provide a, a secure fence to, to keep the kids from, from leaving the play yard.
Is there a condition?
Yeah, staff, staff's recommending a new condition. We'll call it special condition, one that includes the council, and it would read, "All outdoor areas where kids' activities occur shall be enclosed by a fence to protect children and keep them in the outdoor activity area. The fence shall be at least four feet high and shall be maintained in adequate condition so as to not result in safety hazard." The intent of this requirement is to have a fence that'll keep children from leaving the out, outdoor activity area unnoticed, but will not in and of itself present a hazard.
We're, we're, that's not in...
No, that's, that's a...
Okay.
Just suggesting to add it.
Would you read that again, please? Oh, it wasn't...
It's on the screen here.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
So I've been able to speak with the applicant and, you know, let her know that, you know, this is, this is the goal that we're looking for, and if they wanna work with the neighbor to upgrade the existing fence, or if they wanna provide a different solution, potentially even just brace the existing fence so that it's not a danger of falling over, whatever solution is simple and easy and accomplishes the goal, we'll certainly look forward to signing off and approving that idea.
Would you or the building inspector inspect whatever happens with this?
Both, both of us.
Okay.
The only other thing I wanted to share, within the resolution that you have, should the project be approved, there was a where I was referred to mitigated make deck, that we're actually recognizing that this project's exempt from the California Quality Act, and you have a new resolution, I mean with the correct language.
Okay, so that's what's different about this one?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. And that's because it's a school, or, I mean, not a school, but...
Yeah, the exemption has to do with the original, with existing facility. And so with that, happy to answer any questions that...
Yeah, I guess it's appropriate to ask you the questions before we hear from the applicant, so...
I just had a couple. Is there an ability for residents to create, like, a loading zone? I mean, it's a, it's a city street, I don't, is there, is that legal to, you know, to set up, say, a section in front of your house where it's like, you know, three minutes limit, or whatever, you know, like, a loading zone similar to a business loading zone? Like, can people do that? Or is that a city action?
They, they would have to get a, I think it would be on the city to do those improvements and, but if the council felt like that was appropriate for the project, we'd certainly make that a requirement, yeah.
So that was just one question I had. My other question has to do with the number of kids. 30 kids seems like a lot of, for that, that size of a building. Is there a, do you know what the number thresholds are? I mean, I, and, and if you don't know this, I think Suprema might, as far as, is there a number that doesn't require, you know, is there a childcare number that does not require a use permit? And then, do you know what the threat? I know we did another one of these...
Yeah, the state passed a law that, that said that if you're, if you have a daycare, and I'm not sure if it would apply to an after-school program, it might, if you have under, six or under...
Six or under.
...that jurisdiction does not have the discretion to deny it, you still get to apply parking standards and any other applicable standards, but it would, it would circumvent having to get a use permit even if our code said so.
Okay, and then you're not, are you aware of any other next thresholds? As far as, like, okay, I just know that there's, there's another childcare facility on North's, at the very, very end of North Street, that we had talked about at one point, and that was an issue, like, what, you know, the threshold of how many kids were allowed.
I recall that was about traffic or something. I didn't remember that had anything that we didn't...
Well, I think there was some...
I don't think they had 30 kids.
Right, I think there was similar concerns in the neighborhood about, you know, and since that has happened, I haven't actually heard of complaints.
But Majid, do you...
Yeah, I appreciate what Holly just suggested, the idea of if the employees were to use the off-street parking and then have at least two spaces in front, sort of dedicated for short, very short-term pickup, at least during certain hours. That way, there, there would be, because I, I think there is the potential for some traffic conflicts and, and conflicts with parking on nearby residents and so forth. And I also share the concern that 30 seems like an awful lot of kids in a pretty small square footage building, and not only for fire safety, which is a big concern, but also just noise on neighbors. You know, I, I live near enough to the school, but I, I can hear the shrieking out there in the parking, in the play area, which is kinda sweet, but I don't know if I could take three or four hours straight of it. So it, it just seems like 30 is an awfully big number for that small of a, of an existing residence. So it's a concern. I certainly support the idea of having, having an after-school program, and so I don't wanna be, you know, I don't wanna obstruct over that, but I think maybe we could consider a slightly less number of kids in there.
One other question. I am a proud Animal Crackers alumni, which is, if you see that the Rodriguez's primary residence used to be in that facility. Do you, and actually, I think that the map we have, you know how Google Map is always behind reality, you know, that space to the left of the residence is actually a city street, and Animal Crackers had to get a, some sort of something to have actually a play area in that space, which is shown in the map. It's not there anymore. It's been removed.
I remember that.
Remember that?
Yeah.
That's actually, that's actually a city street, kind of.
So you're saying that that's not there anymore as a street?
No, it's not a street, but the city owns it.
Okay, the right-of-way thing.
Right, and we have access there's...
You can see it on that post.
Yeah, and on the, where is it? And up here is a...
Here's the project, so...
Right, and at the top, it used, we own a right-of-way, basically. And up here, there's a utility thing that we need to continue to have access for. I just bring that up because there's not a playground there anymore, obviously, in that space, but Animal Crackers was there, and I don't suppose you remember how many kids they, I mean, that was a...
Number four, why am I dying?
Well, that...
And I was too young to remember, but I don't remember in that location how many kids they were allowed.
Well, that, that raises the, an absolute question. I mean, you, you had mentioned that the fire marshal is investigating the amount of people permitted in that space, but beyond that, isn't there some kind of a standard on the number of children permitted in a space like this, so much per square feet or something? Isn't, there's gotta be some sort, I can't believe that the state of California hasn't written a law about this.
I'm, I'm not aware of, like, a state ratio that, that talks about square footage within a building, you know, for each, each child that's receiving, you know, truffles through this, through this program, and it appears that the limiting factor is gonna come from, from the fire code and the determination of the, of the fire marshal, in this case, or the fire chief.
Excuse me. The key issue number four, noise, the project may result in an increase in noise level during the kids' outdoor activities, and then the comment down below says that the project is expected to result in noise levels similar to noise generated by a school or public playground, which are found in other residential neighborhoods throughout the city. So as the planning official, I mean, you know, if somebody buys a house in a neighborhood that has a school and a playground, they, they buy it knowing full well what they're getting into, but if they buy the house and then it comes along afterwards, that's a different story. So how does that, how does that work in with the statement that you made in your findings? In other words, the neighbors had no choice?
Yeah, certainly the report doesn't touch on the difference between when somebody moves in next to an existing location their kids are playing outside versus the opposite. And I think the, the point that was being made in the report was that we have a number of land uses that are surrounded by a single-family residential homes, and they seem to manage well.
Well, that depends on who gets there first. You know, if you have a free choice to buy a house, knowing that there is this, whether it's a, you know, a lumber mill or, or whatever.
I just wanted to add that there is sort of similar uses in the neighborhood in the sense that the school is not very far away. It was mentioned that there's gonna be some walk, it's, it's walking distance from the school.
Yeah.
And as Majid can attest, you hear it. I mean, you hear, you hear Brookside, which I think is generally happy noise, but that ends it, you know, it ends at a certain time in the afternoon, and what are the time restrictions on the...
It's all about five, I think.
2:30 to 6:00.
To 6:00.
It occurs to me that Suprema and other people might have some relevant comments, and we should hear from them before we...
Yeah, we'll, we'll get them off once we finish with, did you get some?
Did. Will this operate in the summertime, or just during the school year?
Good question for the applicant. It may be an unfazed, some type of...
Okay, so do we have any more questions from Dusty? You're, you're not leaving.
I do, I'm sorry, I have one more question, and then I, I do wanna hear from the public. If we were to approve this with the conditions as, as written, including the additional one, and then the fire department finds that, oh wait, you can only have 20 kids, what's that process?
We, we have the, the way the condition's written, it's up to 30, but...
Unless the fire department says that's not allowed?
And that becomes a limiting factor, and that becomes your cap.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so anybody in the public, including the applicant, would like to come up and...
So my name is Suprema Rodriguez. Okay, here we are, huh?
He comes switched around a little bit.
That's okay. Thank you, I'm short.
You are aware that that is not a...
It's for the TV, it doesn't amplify in the room.
It's not an amplifier, so...
At least I can see you. All right, so my name is Suprema Rodriguez, and I have some information to share with you, but first I thought, since we talked recently about that property at 331, which is my home, the intent is for the staff to always park at my residence. There won't be staff parks, so those three spaces in front of 265 will be reserved for parents. And then in terms of that law, when my husband and I purchased that property almost three years ago, that was an existing preschool playground. We cleaned that, we cleaned, we personally cleaned that playground up, removed all the tires, and restored it back to a city alley, free of charge, and we have been mowing the grass and maintaining that city property on a regular basis, and people use it for extra parking during peak hours when Brookside School is happening, or if there's a special event in the neighborhood or whatever. It's just kind of like an extra parking lot in the neighborhood that three or four cars can easily pull into.
Just to clarify, is that property next to your property or to the, the project property?
It's, it's right here. It's, it's to the east of my property.
All right, this is your property?
Yes. Yes, 331.
And I'm assuming this is north, right?
Yeah.
So...
So it's right under that line.
Okay, it's right under this line here?
Yeah.
How big is it?
It's, it's about a regular lot.
No, no, I mean, the, the, the right-of-way.
The right-of-way is about the same size as the lot that my home sits on.
Oh, really? Is that wide?
Yeah, as it could have been a street, so it's that same...
Okay, but it's not paved or anything like that?
No, so these borders come up, and then there's a incline, there's a pretty steep incline between redwood and... Yeah, it goes uphill, it's a grassy, it will, it is a grassy lot now. You can't go through the street because there are some utility substation-type thing at the top of the hill, as well as it's overgrown with blackberry bushes at the very top, so people don't use it through, for through-street.
Okay.
They just use it as a extra parking lot.
Go ahead.
And then the second thing I wanted to address is that the property that we're speaking of at 265 is, as in Dusty's report, it's approximately 525 feet from Brookside School. I can tell you that, yeah, my home in 331, I can hear students at Brookside School, so in my opinion, it's reasonable that we know that we're living in a residential neighborhood with a school. So that was that. And then I have here a, a letter that's dated November 7th from the Little Lake Fire District that they dropped off for me. I was hoping you had a copy here, and it says, "Dear Suprema, thank you for allowing us access to your new facility. I believe the Learning Debo Academy will be of benefit to our community by providing an outlet for after-school learning. Upon the initial inspection, I was very pleased to see the facility in proper working order. This is a testament to your hard work and knowledge of requirements for your business. All of the safety features from the exit doors, smoke and CO detectors, fire extinguishers, manual pool station, et cetera, were properly sized and placed as to provide for safety for the occupants. After measuring the current available usable square footage of the structure, I calculated the maximum occupancy to be 35. This maximum occupancy would include all occupants of the structure, including staff. Please contact us with any prevention-related questions or any questions regarding our initial inspection for occupancy, and it's signed Chris Wilks, Training Chief with the Little Lake Fire Department."
So, so can we accept that as what you were talking about earlier, that the fire department was looking into the, the number of occupants? Does that sound like it answers any...
Yeah, it sounds like they've completed their evaluation and determined that, that up to 30, the occupancy of 35 is sufficient, so I haven't received this letter yet, but this, this does check.
And how much staff do you have?
We have, we have three teachers.
Three?
Three.
So that'll be 33 total, basically.
Yes, if we use our capacity.
Right.
It's not our, to use our capacity, but yes.
Okay, anything else you want?
Yes. The other thing I wanted to address was, when I purchased, by the way, this property does not belong to Tim and Betty Stransky, at the time that the application was... At the time that the application was submitted, they were the legal owners, so their information was on the application. However, my husband, Martine, and I have closed escrow, and we are the legal owners of the property. So I just wanted to clarify that issue. Yeah, Larry Stransky and Betty and Tim Stransky have no financial benefit. Their escrow's closed, and whatever happens is whatever happens. Has no impact on them. Initially, when I purchased this property, this property was in really bad shape. The people had... That had been living there could be categorized, pardon me, as quarters. There was a significant... There was about three feet of trash all out the back door. The inside was in pretty bad shape. The front yard, as neighbors can attest to, had at least three feet of rotting hay. There was garbage. The garage door was bulging, full of trash. There was a family living here. This residence was an eyesore. When Chris Wilks came out, he was shocked at how different the property looked from when he had responded to a fire there. So certainly, our ownership of the property has upgraded the nearby value of our neighbors just simply by cleaning up this home. I know there's been some questions about noise. I just wanna point out that for most of the year, we're there three and a half hours day, tops. If we weren't there, you're potentially looking at a family with two to four children that are gonna be living in the home, that could easily have noise going on from morning till night, as children do. We live down the street, we have children of our own. So that was one thing I wanted to address. The program, Chris addressed how many students could attend the school, and that is based on the state requirements. There's a certain number of square footage per child by law that they have to have indoor, and then there's a certain percentage of square feet outdoors.
Yeah.
And then I know that one of the other parents had brought it up, and I'll let them talk to you about what the size of an average classroom is. And thirteen hundred and, I think it is seventy square feet, may not seem like much to you, but when you compare that to the average class size, it's actually quite large. Our students in the program, what we do is, we are located approximately two blocks from Brookside School. We'll pick students up, we walk them over. Those students that we're walking over, we're alleviating the traffic congestion during the peak time at two forty in the afternoon. That's that many fewer parents that will be picking up. Instead, it's staggering out a little bit later. Some of our students come for one hour a day, some come for two, some might come for three hours a day. They come to our program, they receive cooking. We have cooking classes, we have intervention classes where a teacher works with them on their reading and their math to work with their primary elementary teacher to make sure that they're on target. So it's more of a support program. I've heard the phrase, "We're a daycare." We are not a daycare. We're an after-school enrichment program, offering specific services. And those services are intervention services for kids after school. We've got some technology classes in the backyard. We're putting in a gardening area, cooking classes. There's things to enrich what children don't fully get during the daytime in school.
So the point you just made about the difference between a daycare and an after-school program, you will have some days during school holidays when it will be a full-day thing. How does that fit in with... I don't know if it's a legal issue or, you know...
So what is the program like?
Well, I'm guessing... I'm looking at the distinction that you said, that you mentioned, between the daycare center and an after-school.
Right.
And it's not strictly an after-school when you count the school holidays, and there are, what, half a dozen or something?
Right.
So where the kids will be there all day. So does that... Does that go against the license, or is that a restriction or something?
It does not. And Chris Wilks and I talked about what the licensing requirements are, and we're not governed by those licensing. We... So during the summertime, we would be providing a summer program. And written within community care licensing is, you have to have so many weeks, and we're under the number of weeks that would qualify us to fall into one of those categories, where we don't qualify to have to report to community care licensing, but we're not providing enough weeks of elementary education to have to report to the Willets Unified School District. We're kind of like in that area. I know in Yokaya, they have after-school programs where they offer these kinds of services, and it doesn't... It's not a daycare. It's more of a business, like a tutorial-type program.
So just to understand what you just said, and I hadn't thought about this, during the school vacation period...
Yes.
You will be offering a full-day program for the kids?
Yes, so we offered this last summer. We had a program. We rented the facility at the Willets Charter School during the summer period. I think it was something like nine weeks, we rented their facility, and we held a science academy. And students came, and they learned sign language, they did hands-on science, they had math intervention, they took Spanish classes, an array of different classes that they took throughout the day.
So again, as you mentioned, the number of weeks that you would be doing this full-day program does not bring you under the school district's requirements?
Correct.
Is there a number of days that... Explain that. What is the limitation?
I don't have the specific rules in front of me, but it's posted, and I imagine your attorney can look that up, but there... It's posted how many weeks and how many hours before you have to report to the school district, and we don't fall in that category, that we have to show that we're a school, because these students have a primary school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could you clarify that we've got the school holidays, you would have eight to six available, but what about the summer?
That's what she was...
I'm referring to the summer.
So what are your operating hours in the summer?
During the summer, eight to six would be our maximum hours, yes.
Is that like two and a half months worth of...
School gets out approximately the middle of June, and school starts around the second to third week of August. So it's about two months.
Because that's not covered in the application.
It's a school holiday.
Well, summer doesn't seem like the same as a holiday.
Well, it's a long holiday.
Okay.
One other, we got a letter from some concerned neighbors, and they are concerned about noise and parking, because as we know, it's a congested area. But one of the things that's mentioned is the vacant building next to you, and it's next to your existing facility over here, that, you know, why couldn't that be used? And I think I know the answer to that. But I don't know if the public does, so maybe if you could address...
So yeah, I did receive...
I mean, it's not within walking distance of, obviously, of Brookside, but...
I did receive that anonymous letter this evening, and it does ask the question, "Why don't we move next door?" Well, the number-one question is, "I don't own the building next door. Did I inquire if the building would be available? I did. It's not available, and I have looked into other locations." One of the reasons, though, that we would prefer not to go into that building next door is safety. Walking children across Main Street is not safe. There was a time when we were walking children for a short period of time across Main Street, and we found that it was too risky. And so we would prefer not to walk children that long distance from Brookside School to here. Ideally, you're talking about kindergarten, first, and second graders. They need to be within two, three blocks of their school. So that was the reason for that.
Great, thank you.
Anything else up here? Thank you for the moment. Anybody else in the audience who'd like to come up? Come on up here and give us your name for the record. You too? Okay. Yeah, and we have a three-minute time limit on comments. So that little light thing next to you, when it flashes red, you're gonna be sucked into the floor, so...
I am Erica Williams, and my daughter has attended Suprema's program for almost four years now. I just wanted to say that it's an amazing program. She's blossomed academically, emotionally, with her confidence, everything. A few things that I would like to address is the occupancy issue that you guys are concerned with. The maximum occupancy of this room is fifty people, and these are thirty small children with five teachers overseeing them in a thirteen-hundred-square-foot home. So at Brookside School, the classrooms are significantly smaller than thirteen-hundred square feet as well, and they have one teacher, and sometimes only a half-day aide. And that's all daycare. What Suprema provides is a wonderful, nourishing, educational environment for our children to really blossom and grow. Her program has always consisted of a steady rotation of indoor programs and outdoors. So as much as I can appreciate the neighbors' concerns, just like any other parent, you can only tolerate somebody else's children's noise for so long. They're not gonna be outside for four hours screaming and yelling and running crazily. I mean, we're in the winter months for right now as well. Most of the activities for now are gonna be indoor. So the impact on the neighbors is going to be minimal. And as far as the traffic, I drive that street every single day. That's one of the busiest streets for Brookside anyway. And honestly, whenever I have to attend an event for Brookside, there's sometimes I have to park six blocks away, sometimes I can park right up front. It just depends. And if the neighborhood doesn't have an issue with that school running functionally the way it has for so long, this is minimal hours, five days a week, and it's... Our children need it. They need it. They need her program. I do not wanna send my daughter anywhere else. I have kept her with Suprema for a reason. So I just wanna thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Shirley Schott, and I'm a neighbor to this property. My house is five houses away, and in order for me to go to Main Street or to leave town, I would have to drive by that property. I totally support Suprema's application. We need good after-school care. We had a childcare facility in that neighborhood for, I think, about twenty or twenty-one years. I don't think there were a lot of problems about that. And so it's certainly a use that has been used in that exact neighborhood for a long period of time. The piece of property that you were asking questions about, that right-of-way piece that is an extension to Maple Street, is really as wide as a right-of-way of the street. That's how wide it is there. And at one point, there was gravel there where people actually parked there, and people, as Suprema said, people in the neighborhood parked there, people from Brookside parked there. So that certainly is another place where people park. The whole neighborhood sounds like Brookside School. So I don't think that any of the neighbors could really say that there's no noise at their house and that this is gonna make new noise, because we all can hear Brookside School. They have these megaphones. Yeah, you can hear them loud and clear. I hope that you'll allow this to happen. We need good care. I like the fact that it's right in the neighborhood, and the kids don't have to go far. The point about getting another twenty-five or thirty kids deposited to their after-school without their parents driving there is a great idea, because the traffic there is pretty amazing right at the moment that school gets out. And if this would alleviate that even by a few cars, I think that's a great idea.
Mrs. Schott, do you remember how many kids were at Animal Crackers?
Well, I was thinking it was something between up to forty, like thirty-eight maybe or something like that. That house is bigger. That house is like twenty-four hundred square feet.
Right.
Where Animal Crackers was.
Yeah.
And...
Just curious.
It was more... I'm pretty sure it was more than this, although, you know, I don't remember now. I did once know that, but...
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Bill Barkstall. I live in the neighborhood too. In fact, my house is in that picture. And I lived there when Animal Crackers was open, and Animal Crackers was not a problem as far as I'm concerned. But I do have this concern. I love what Suprema is doing, and I think it's really important. What I don't wanna have happen, because this is a residential neighborhood, and although we can hear Brookside School, I live about as far away from it as Suprema does, and I don't hear it a lot. So if other people are hearing it, then really loud, then I'm not. But what I don't wanna have happen is a precedent starting to happen where residential neighborhoods start getting spot conversions to commercial uses without the neighbors being able to attend the hearing and being able to comment on that too. It's... I think that neighbors, you know, if you live right next to a dirty facility where, for instance, during the summertime, they're from eight to six or whatever it is, the hours, that there are a lot of children there, and they will be outside. That does have an impact on your home. I mean, I would not wanna, next to my home, if the house right next door to me was gonna be converted to a facility like that, I'd be up here complaining about it. And so I'm trying to balance this, because I like Suprema, I like her husband, love what she does, and I think that what she does is really important. And I don't wanna be the big, bad guy here, and at the same time, I wanna be respectful of people who live in residential neighborhoods. And suddenly not being able to have a... Be able to have a hearing where I was able to stand up as a neighbor. My... The same thing was gonna happen to my next-door neighbor's house. So I'm trying to find a way to allow you to do what it is that you wanna do and allow people who are impacted to have a say too. And as I say, I've lived there when our house was Animal Crackers, and I loved the kids. I walked past there with my dog every day. My dog loves all the kids, and sat down, and all the kids played with her, and so, as I say, I'm not trying to be the big, bad guy, I just don't wanna set a precedent where our residential neighborhoods start becoming kind of open territory for other uses that impact.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Anybody else? Steelers.
Diehard.
Me too.
My name is Manuel Ochoa. I live right across the street from the place that they're speaking of, and I think it's an excellent thing that they're trying to do here with the kids. I think the kids need this. I think Willets need this. And I have no problem with them coming in there, the kids, whatever, their wall could be even used, the two spots in front of mine, plus I have one in my truck, a single vehicle. They're welcome to it, I'm about sixty feet from the crosswalk, anytime. I think everything they're trying to do is perfect. What that place looked like before they moved in, like Suprema was saying earlier, it had hay bales, it had weeds like this, trash. It was the biggest mess. When they moved out, I could not believe the stuff that came out of there. I just wanna say, I am so glad that they have it, 'cause it actually looks like I'm happy to live there now. And the noise, bring it on. They're kids, you know? And for a few hours, it is joy to the ears.
I hear you.
That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just like to...
Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Martine Rodriguez. I'm Suprema Rodriguez's husband. I'd like to just point out that, kinda, that I agree with the bills has to say, and I think that's what we're doing right now. Neighbors can come up, express their concerns. This is not something new. Animal Crackers was there for twenty-some years, so it's not like it's... We're breaking new grounds. I think it's already been done, and it hasn't been a huge issue as far as I know. And if neighbors do have... And if neighbors do have concern, this is their time to come up and say what their concerns are.
Okay, thank you. And Dusty, the neighborhood was notified of this meeting today, weren't they?
All property owners within three hundred feet of the project site were notified by mail.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments they would like to make? I see a form rising in the back.
My name's Christopher Hale. I've known Suprema and her family for years, and they are the most amazing family. I love them. They're like family to me. I played with their kids up in River Trails when we were neighbors for hours on end. I think moving these kids into this house is a really good thing, because right now they're at preschool, and that is more for preschool-aged children. These children need something more like a school, which is exactly what we'll be able to do at this new site. And I will personally come down and help them rebuild the fence. Anything I can do about it. I think they should...
You said that on television, you know?
Hold me to it. I'll come help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, who else has something to say?
Hi, my name is Maricela Lampritch, and I am a sister-in-law to Suprema. She's married to my brother, so I've known her forever. She's a very dedicated person. She actually took a chelk, a preschool, there was a need of a person to take over in the valley. I don't know if you remember that. It was going under. She took it under her wing, she built it back up, only to lose the property. And then she relocated over by John's place, you know? Made it huge, made it grow, made it great, only to lose it to fire. Within a weekend, she was like right next door, and she was, you know, she was there. She fixed it up, she got it going. Her children never missed a day. She was there for the parents, she was there for the children. I personally was a preschool teacher for years, so I was, I worked with her for many years, you know, as well as a preschool teacher. So I know the love that she has for these children, the dedication that she has for these children. And, you know, and this is a great program, and she's only doing it for the children, because she knows the need, and she wants to be there for them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I should probably know, but is that your place across the street?
Yes.
Huh. Okay. Anybody else?
Sure. Comment?
I realized that I didn't address the fence issue next door, and I just wanted to say that I had a conversation with the woman who owns the house that's on the west side of the property. They're using it as like three small rentals there, and she expressed concerns that she might have. And we, the only concern that she had basically was that we didn't have the windows open all day long on that side of the property. She liked the fact that we were closed by six, we didn't open before eight o'clock, and that there was only a short period of time on the regular days. And then she expressed that there was a tree that was bothering her last week. We had that tree. I paid to have that tree cut down, and I haven't heard any other issues from her. We've been working on this property for approximately three months while we're going through the escrow process, and we had talked to, we had talked to our neighbors, and there was, there were no issues. There is a, the fence in question on the east side of the property is a long fence that runs along the property. The fence is located approximately two feet on their side of the property, and you know that because there's an old fence that's buried in the bushes, because their bushes are protruding into my property anywhere from three to five feet along the property line, depending upon where you're looking at. And there's also a stake where they mark the property line, and so it's clear that it's two feet to the east of our property. That fence has been there for approximately twenty years. And I have a letter here from the former property owner, Tim and Betty Stransky, stating that regarding the fence on the east side of the property, "I have never agreed to replace this fence, nor do I believe anyone has ever, has been directed to do any such construction. Several years ago, the owner of the property on the east side contacted me about repair, replacement of the north end of the fence as it was beginning to lean. I agreed to get some bids for the work, but I seem to remember that the owner of the property decided not to pursue the work. This was a long time ago, and we had no recent discussions." It only came up recently, this last Friday, about the issues where I had been contacted by Dusty about the fence. The property owner wanted me to replace the fence, the entire fence. Aside from those two six-foot panels, the rest of the fence is standing up fine. I had a, John Sherman was out at the property, and he looked at the property and felt that there was nothing wrong with the fence, except that, those two six-foot pieces leaning out. He asked that we put, my husband did it today, but some, we put some cement posts in, and I think it's two-by-fours that we put, that we put two eight, three eight-foot two-by-fours in cement. What are they?
Four-by-fours.
Thank you, four-by-fours. In front of the fence. So should the fence at any time decide to give, which it still looks like it's holding strong, that those, those beams there would hold it. In addition, Tim Stransky had come out and also put a piece of wood just pressing up against it. The reason that that piece of fencing is leaning towards my property is because the ground is not even on both sides. My neighbor's property in that particular area is almost five feet higher than my property, and they have a buildup of soil and garden material on their side. And then they had a piece of like bamboo wrap that was on their side of the fence up against the fence, and blackberry bushes have grown between the bamboo and the fence, thus pushing the fence outward and making it protrude onto my property. I feel like it would be inappropriate to force me to repair a fence for, one, that's not on my property, it's two feet within their property. Two, I feel that that property owner is negligent in not repairing their fence. In fact, I would like it if they cut their bushes that are on my property. And I did bring a photograph of their property from the street that shows that you can barely even see the home from the city street, because that property is so overgrown with bushes. And I'm happy to provide a copy of that as well. So I just feel like that, that safety concern, we've satisfied what the code enforcer would like, and you can verify that with John. I also have pictures on my phone that I'm happy to verify. They didn't print out in time, but I do have those, and I'm available for an inspection as well.
So just to understand what you had said, when you mentioned the property marker...
Correct.
Where was that in relation to the fence?
So, if this was my property, and this is the street right here, my neighbor's house is on this side. The fence runs approximately four, I would say, four or five feet down the side of the property here. When we obtained the property, all of their shrubbery was up against the house. We cut their shrubbery back so that we could walk down the side of our property, so we cleared it about two and a half feet, so you can now walk back behind to get access to the back of our property. When you walk back down the corner of the home, there is an old fence that shows the property line. In addition, there is a cement wall, and in that cement wall is a stake, which they use to show where the property line is. And it clearly shows that it's two feet inside the fence line.
So in the picture that we saw, there was the, your property was down below, there was that wall, then the slope up to the fence, and you're saying that the property line is on the top of that wall?
The property line is two feet to the west of that fence.
Towards your property?
Towards my property.
So the fence is clearly on your neighbor's property?
Yes, and there's an old fence that, that shows that, as well as there is one of those markers.
So Dusty, how does that dealt with? When you have a situation with a, you know, a broken fence that's on somebody's property, not on this subject property...
Good fences make good neighbors.
I mean, how does that work? Usually, if fence is on the property line, good neighbors are responsible for it.
Yeah, just like the city, you know, isn't going to get into a property line dispute, we're not going to get into a dispute over who's required to maintain the fence, whose fence it is. I think what is appropriate in this situation that we have, a use permit where we're looking to allow for schoolkids to play in a backyard, is that we just want to secure the area. And so this condition, this special condition number one gets to that, gets to that point in that intent. So certainly, it doesn't say that they need to fix the existing fence or work with the neighbor. It simply says that they need to secure and maintain some type of fence that's adequate so it's not resulting in a safety hazard to the kids. And we go on a little bit further to make sure it doesn't have barbed wire and that kind of stuff. But, you know, in this situation, you know, the applicant appears to have already worked with our building official, has already done some improvements to the fence to safeguard it from being a hazard. We'll certainly have our building official go out there and verify that everything was done correctly, and in which case it is, then we satisfy that condition.
Okay.
It'll live with the permit going forward, so it would just be a maintenance issue.
Okay. So you got, you got that covered, however it works out. Good, thank you.
Does anyone make a motion, please?
Okay.
I would...
Oh, wait, by the way, before you do that, we have a truncated...
Council.
Council right now. What is the rule for the vote?
Let's see, on a conditional use permit application, I've, we should have, we should have three affirmative votes to approve it.
All right, so...
And we're acting as planning commission.
Right.
I would move that we approve the revised, with that revised language, this copy that we got today, conditional use permit, U-16-02. And I do want to include that special condition, specifically because we are, yes, special condition one, specifically because this is expanded use of the, of the property, and I think that it is, behooves us to make sure that the backyard is secured. I will second that motion.
You second? It may be hard for you to believe, looking at me, but my kids are not that age. My grandkids are not that age anymore. So we know what the noise level is like, and we're fortunate to be, to have neighbors who have little kids, not thirty of them, but they have little kids. And, you know, it's, it's okay. We sit in our backyard, and we listen to them screaming and giggling over the fence, and this is the cycle of life. So anyway, I got poetic. Would you care to do a, with a straight face?
I just want to remember Strong.
Yes.
Madigal.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, you got it.
Thank you. And these little guys get to see what it's like to be on the city council.
Yeah.
And to address Bill's point, is that any other such facility would have to go through a similar process, so...
We're probably...
I weren't there that same year.
Okay, we'll wait for the crowds to disperse, the noisy neighbors.
Yeah, that wouldn't be on Main Street. Similar concerns, and if it had to come before, then yeah. And if we had been up in the neighborhood here, it's...
That's what I was wondering. So, I, well, you know, certain things have to be by three affirmative votes, like in the... But I, I thought that perhaps a planning commission hearing likewise, but I think it could have been a majority. So basically, it's a majority, the full council, not a majority. No, it would be the majority, I think the majority of the three of you could have passed this.
I would have thought so.
Either way.
Can I, can I just make a comment in response to the point Bill made?
Yeah, comment.
Bill, I just wanted to comment that your concern about precedent setting is that any other such proposal would have to go through a conditional use permit process as well, that includes notification of nearby properties, includes their ability to come and speak to us or send us letters. And if, if we didn't have the kind of community support that this project obviously had, it might not always go the same way, and we wouldn't want to have, you know, thirty of them on one block, so...
Even better.
Yeah, okay, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you for that. We are at...
Number eight.
And we did not, did we recess?
Did we?
We did not reconvene as the...
Right, we did not, we're still in commission.
So let's adjourn as the planning, we will adjourn as the planning commission and return to the business of the city council, and we have city manager.
Yes.
Discussion of possible approval of budget amendment to reallocate a water operator three position to a new meter-reader maintenance smart position.
Thank you. So this goes back to looking at reorganizing and being more efficient anywhere we can. We had some longtime personnel retire earlier this year in both the water plant and the sewer plant, and we brought some new operators on board, including a transfer from, from the public works department. And at this point, things are working pretty well over at the water plant, but one of the things that we realized is we've had a water operator reading meters for quite some time. And, you know, at some point, it was probably an operator one, but it's evolved to we have an water operator three reading our meters. There's no licensing requirement to read meters, and so what we'd like to do with the vacant water operator three position that we have is convert that to a part-time meter-reader and part-time in our parks department, public works, too, but primarily parks.
So Adrian, I mean, there seems to be a savings to the enterprise fund, but a cost to the general fund. Is that, is that a new cost to the general fund, or is that a cost that still exists from having a part-time groundskeeper or whatever?
We've used up the allocation for the seasonal parks work of this year, and so this would be a new cost to the general fund.
So this, this creates another forty thousand dollars of deficit to the general fund?
It does. Although the reduction is eighty-three, you know, it's not a one-for-one, it's not a, it's not a transfer of those costs into the general fund, it's about half.
Well...
But you're right, I mean...
Well, there's a net savings of forty-three thousand dollars.
I know, but you're saving from, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to argue, I'm trying to argue against a saving in the enterprise fund, but that's, I don't have a problem with that, but, but enterprise fund has a little more capability of paying its way than the general fund does, so you're going to give yourself a, an additional burden at the general fund. You guys have got that all figured out? Seems to me you just took your deficit to three forty from three...
You know, you know, maybe I did miss something when I was doing the math. So explain where the increase to the general fund happens.
It's under fiscal impact. An increase of forty thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars to the general fund.
I, I see that. I just wanted to know where, how that works.
Well, so we're looking at wages and benefits for the employee.
Yeah.
And part-time would be in the water department as a meter-reader, rather than the currently full-time allocated water operator three position. And part-time would be in public works, parks, and that's where the increase to the general fund occurs.
So the, the three items with bullet points, seven thousand, one twenty-seven, sixteen, fifty, and seventeen, one ninety-six are all general fund increase. and seventeen, one ninety-six are all general fund increases.
I see.
So, that's where that comes from.
That's correct.
Well, my question is, how are those duties currently being filled? And is it possible to only hire a part-time meter reader and not have another part-time portion of that person doing general fund funded stuff? If we can cover it some other way, it would be nice not to increase our general fund deficit.
So, that is an alternative. Without recruiting for it, I don't know what we would get in terms of part-time applicants. This year, we have used up our allocation for the seasonal parks worker. In future years, we wouldn't have that additional seasonal parks worker because this position would be covering those duties.
Do we know what that savings is?
Yeah, what savings is that?
In future years? I'm sorry, ask Tom, what's the question?
The seasonal parks worker position, in future years, that would be a savings because we wouldn't have that. Do you know what that savings might be, the future year? So, it's, it's an increase of forty thousand...
In seventeen?
Seventeen, but in future years, there would be a savings.
We can tell you what it is for this year.
Yeah.
Give me a minute.
Well, I think, I mean, unless there's some duplication of accounting here, they're already saying that they have spent their allocation for the seasonal parks worker, whatever that may be, five thousand, twenty-five, fifty.
For the sixteen, seventeen?
And this is going to extend that another forty thousand dollars beyond that. So, it may be interesting to know how much has been spent. But the net, the net loss is...
But this is suggesting that after the net loss...
In sixteen, seventeen?
No, it's not suggesting...
Well, that, that's the question I'm asking is...
Well, I'm saying, this, you can ask that, but it doesn't, that's not what it's suggesting here. It's suggesting that you're going to have an additional, an expense to the general fund of forty thousand dollars.
How many hours does forty-three thousand dollars represent in staff time cost?
Depends on which staff.
Well, I understand, I mean, but as a general rule, what do we look at? The hourly and overhead number per hour?
Well, what would you think? Make us stand there. Probably won't be far off.
Probably fifty bucks an hour, I'm thinking.
I think that's a little low, but you can do fifty into forty, eight hundred hours.
Okay, so I guess what I'm wondering is, it is, you know, a bit of a concern shifting an extra burden onto the general fund. And I'm wondering, I know that throughout the year, we use workers from the water and the sewer department to work out in public works. Is that a way of maybe trying to shift the money back again a little bit?
Somewhat. You know, everybody is getting acclimated to their departments. And what we're seeing is there's been more cooperation, not only with working together on whether it's water leaks or whatever the project is, but also public works crews stepping up and taking on some of the things that sewer operators and the water operators have had to do because there either weren't enough bodies or there wasn't a level of cooperation that there is currently.
So, is it a feasible plan to say that we can try to use more people from the water department to do public works work?
No.
To kind of shift this money back?
I think it's the other way around. I got a question for you. Do we still do that much meter reading? I mean, don't we have remote capture of meters now on a lot of meters?
We do, we don't have it on all of the meters. I don't know what the percentage is. But when I checked with staff, I was told that it's taking two weeks out of every month to read the meters.
And even the remote, I believe you still have to drive by.
You don't have to get out. But you still have to go by with a beep beep. But it's quicker.
We don't do it like PG&E does it. We don't...
Not smart metering.
...radiate people quite as much.
We don't get on the website.
The death rate.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that I understand the concern about increasing the general fund hit. But if it's more accurate as to what, and if it, if it's more accurate for what we need and improves efficiencies, I would rather it be reflected where it's actually being, you know, in the department where it's actually being spent. And then in the general fund, you would have to work on ways to cut to make that work, you know, in future budget years. But if, if that's really where the work is being done or where it's most efficiently being done, it seems appropriate to have it reflected in that area.
And I still don't think I have an answer, at least not a clear one. If, it says here that there will be a cost saving in future fiscal years with the elimination of the seasonal parks worker. So, in sixteen, seventeen, we've already used up that budget. So, this is going to hit, if we approve it. We'll add forty thousand to the general fund deficit, or at least the projected deficit for this year. In seventeen and eighteen, do we eliminate that extra forty thousand?
We will have the forty thousand dollar expense and we will not have the...
We eliminate a seasonal... That's the question.
The question is, the seasonal parks worker portion?
Is fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Because he's unbenefited.
So, right now, per year, we're only paying fifteen thousand for that portion of this that's in the general fund.
No, if you become a vested, benefited employee.
That's concerning.
I think you're going to have to take him, I think, I mean, I applaud the notion that we're going to take eighty-three thousand dollars out of the water fund, saving, how about eighty-three thousand dollars savings in the water fund by not utilizing or needing another grade-three operator in order to spend half the month reading meters. But I think you're, I think you're, I think you're going to have to figure out a way to use a public works worker for two weeks a month and go into the, and maybe cut that savings in the water department from eighty to forty and use, you're a public works guy to read meters for two months, an existing employee. I don't think you're going to be able to afford another employee. That would be mine.
Replacing an employee with a different status, but it is...
Four public works maintenance workers. And Bill, the public works supervisor who's out there on, on the job too, to cover the needs of the entire city. So, I don't know that it's realistic that we can pull a public works person off of what they're already doing to go read meters. I think what we would need to look at is see how successful we would be in hiring a part-time meter reader, somebody that is, you know, would be fine with working two weeks out of the month.
Same thing.
Well, it...
I just, I'd caution to add to your labor overhead right now.
This is a conundrum. I mean, you know, when I looked at this thing, I'm seeing forty-three thousand dollars savings overall. And frankly, I didn't, I didn't consider one, the general fund versus the water fund. Ultimately, it's still the city's budget. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I would be upset with adding forty-three thousand to the general fund deficit if we were saving that amount of money, or forty thousand, if we were saving forty-three thousand overall. I guess my mind isn't that refined to differentiate between departments.
I'd be willing to try a motion, or do you want to hear from the public?
We will, I mean, get it, if there's, let's see if there's a motion in a second and then we'll take public comment, so they can know what you're, what we're trying to do.
Yeah, my other thought on this is that the water fund also has a deficit. And it's, it's true that it's not apples to apples, you know, as far as, as far as deficits and where they lie. But I'm going to move that we approve the budget amendment to reallocate the water operator to a new meter reader maintenance worker position.
Second, third, and last call for guys, for lack of a second.
All seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation, which is... Are you clear on the motion, Kathy? Anybody up here like to make a comment on it before I open up to the public? Seeing none, does anybody care to address this issue? Second, third, and last call, seeing none, going back up here.
I'll make a, yeah, I'll make a motion that we...
You already have a motion?
You already have a motion.
Oh, that's right.
You have a motion, I'm sorry.
I was brought out. Sorry.
Let's call the vote.
You've got a lag tonight.
Yeah.
No.
Strong?
No.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Lawrence King?
Yeah.
Never.
No. Any care to try and make another motion?
That's what I was, that's what I was waiting for. I'll make a motion that we approve a part-time position, that we, you know, approve the elimination of the, the level-three position, but we add a half-time position for water meter reader.
See what you get.
In the water fund. And then, and then, you know, see what happens. We might have to revisit this, but that's my motion.
Is there a second for that?
Well, I'm not sure I understand. So, basically, what you're saying is you would put the cost back onto the water department, correct?
It would, it would, I think it would eliminate, we would eliminate eighty-three thousand in the water enterprise fund, but then we would add back in a part-time. But maybe you can explain that better than I am doing here.
You got it.
We would add back in a half-time meter reader position.
So, what we had presented was for a full-time benefited position. And if we aren't going with that and your, your motion is for a part-time meter reader that would not be benefited, those numbers would be lower in the water enterprise fund. So, you're eliminating the eighty-three, five, six, five, but then you're going to add back in to the water enterprise fund, the cost of the part-time meter reader.
So, what is the breakout, that was going to be my question, what's the breakout point for part-time to become, at what point do they become...
They can't work more than a thousand hours a year, and so...
So, that would be...
It's about four hours a day or every other week.
Twenty hours a week, basically.
Would there be any value, Adrienne, do you think, of taking that out in terms of an RFP for a bid to read water meters?
We looked at, we looked at that a number of years ago, I want to say maybe four years ago. And at the time, I seem to recall that it was not cost-effective, but that could have been because we were comparing it to... Yeah, I don't, Joanne was the one that took care of that, and I don't recall the details of it.
It just might be something to look at. I would have a concern that it might not survive the labor law challenge, you know, being a directed employee or something.
So, can I, can you clarify them, can someone clarify the motion for me?
It would be to eliminate the water operator three position and to authorize a part-time, half-time, or whatever it takes, I guess, half-time meter reader position.
To be funded out of the water enterprise?
Has to be.
Yes, out of the water enterprise fund, and that, yeah, that's my motion. And if it requires that they be an employee because of labor laws, then so be it. But it would still be considerable savings over a full-time employee. And a savings, obviously, to the general fund.
So, let me just clarify, that right now, that operator three position is an open position. It's not, we're not bumping anybody, there's, nobody's going to lose their job. It's, it is a funded...
Unfilled position.
Unfilled position, okay.
I'll second. And I just want to find out if RHR person has anything to add.
I think it's going to be quite difficult to fill a position. We're really struggling with law enforcement openings. So, if we're saying part-time, two weeks out of the month, I'm not very sure we're going to be successful in getting a qualified candidate.
Well, that's fine, let's give it a try.
What is the skill level required with this? Do you have any idea? Do you want to come up here so the people at home can hear you?
Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that question.
I think the biggest, I mean, to me, one of the challenges, first off, is to know where the meters are. I mean, it's going to take a certain, certain amount of training just to know...
How to read the word "water"?
It doesn't require any licensing to read the meters, but...
It does take some skill.
Like coastal workers, this position, this person that fills this position will have to visit all different types of home environments. And those have proven to be challenging in the past. So, we can't just hire anyone off the street. We need to find, make sure that we have the right person with the right temperament and skill set to handle any sort of conflict that may arise.
There's water, Bill.
Thank you.
And I did second it, right?
Yes, we have a motion and a second, and I'll open that up for public discussion. So, this is a, would maintain the expense in the water enterprise fund, but it would lower it something less than eighty-three thousand dollars, maybe as low as forty, but probably not much below that.
And it may not be able to be filled, depending on the recruitment.
Yeah. Seeing none, any other more comments up here? Roll call, please.
Was there a second on that?
Yeah, there was.
Yeah.
Holly.
Holly seconded Madge's motion.
My comment is, obviously, it will depend on some success in recruiting. And also, it may turn out that we're understaffing something so badly that we're going to have to revisit that. I just, I think it would be better to start with the minimal thing and see if it can work.
So...
Apologies to all those overworked people we already have.
So, my question is, who's going to read the, who's reading the meters this month?
It's been rotating amongst the water operators.
And that is deemed to be unreasonable to continue in the future?
It's just more costly to have a water operator at a higher pay rate going around reading meters.
Well, I get that, but, but we've already, we're already paying for them right now. But we're not going to get rid of them, we're going to hire half another person.
Wait, but those people are going to be doing, that they're going to be doing, they're going to be spending more time doing the stuff that they're called, you know, that they're, that we're...
I, I get that, but I'm good to go. You guys good to go?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Uh, yes.
Excuse me, Lawrence King?
Yes.
No, I think we should just continue to do it the way we're doing it. Pass, it's four to one. Uh, verbal reports.
Yes. All right. So, in public works, crews have been fixing miscellaneous water leaks and cleaning up leaves around town. Our street sweeper is temperamental, it's old and does not have an indefinite lifespan.
That's a machine, not a machine.
Important to note.
They're continuing removal of the problem trees at City Park. And in fact, today, this morning, they took out a rather large stump and found that it was hollowed inside. But on a positive note, the city has received a twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant from PG&E for trees. And so, that'll help us in the purchase of replacement trees.
Let's put in some palm trees. Let's put in some palm trees.
When are they going to start planting the trees?
They had to get that stump out today, and I think, you know, as long as the weather holds up, they're going to be on it. So over the next few days, week, you should see them planting. At the wastewater treatment plant, the second new blower is up and running as of yesterday. The last old blower will be removed next week, and the new one will be installed early next month. And just today, Brook Trails ordered the inspection camera that we approved through a shared services agreement, and that will arrive in two to three weeks. At the water plant, the three-million gallon tank and the vault project is continuing to move forward at a good pace. We're hoping to have that up and running in mid-December.
What projects is that?
It's moving some utilities, and so this is going to eliminate the eighteen T phone lines that give us problems every time we have a rain event. Under Elections, I spoke with the Elections Office late this afternoon. Tomorrow, they'll know how many ballots are left to process, and those mail-ins and provisional ballots will be reflected in the final canvas report. They have until December sixth to get that done. Usually, it's, you know, within a couple of weeks' time, but they'll keep us posted on that. And then, just a couple miscellaneous things, the police chief and I went to Rachel's challenge. Did you want to say something about that under your reports?
I could, but if you want to.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that Jerry gets credit, and his department gets credit for funding this, it's a national program that addresses school violence, bullying, and teen suicide, and it's intended to decrease those, of course. And it was brought to our community because of the PD. It's pretty, very powerful program to go watch. The step on the bypass a couple of weekends ago was fantastic, thanks to the hard work of the Chamber of Commerce, Caltrans, many volunteers, and some Brown City crews, specifically Bill, Kenan, Josh, and Tom, who were out there flagging, doing traffic control for the event. And then, I'm sure this will be brought up under Good and Welfare, but the dedication last Thursday was just spectacular. That's what I have.
Those blowers, did we put those in, the crew put those in themselves?
I believe so.
Good for them.
I have a comment or a question about the signage. I'm very glad to see that there is a new sign that says Willets and it has the, some of the services. However, before you get to that sign, there's a sign that says next service is twenty-seven miles. And I think it's confusing. It is even to those of us who knows that we've got all this stuff in Willets. If you're driving along there and you see the sign, next service is twenty-seven miles, you might think, oh, well, I'll just motor on for twenty-seven miles and ignore the fact that the next sign says Willets has services. Is that, does it make sense to have them in the other?
I think that's a standard Caltrans, yeah.
Is that, is that the standard?
Next services, and so then they're like, these are the services that are here.
Okay, to me, it was confusing.
It's kind of get you to basically say, look, this is your...
This is your chance, okay, well, I guess that's the way it is then. But I'm very gratified that there is a...
With the food and lodging, little things in the hospital.
Yes.
And I want to give Dusty credit for that. He was already working on this well before this coming up as an issue, and was able to get Caltrans to agree to come and visit and do their little survey.
Very good.
Before, rather than after the bypass opened.
Yeah, thank you. And I know people that have missed the exit even though they live in Willets because they're not expecting it, but anyway, they all get used to it.
And that, those signs do help, because prior to those being up, it was like Willets, and it was, the sign was like at the, like you would have had this, known about it already.
Yeah.
Right. Department recommendations. City clerk, anything going on? Finance?
I'm right here.
There you are. Usually try to hide me back. Glad to see you up front.
You like this chair better?
Thank you, yeah. Finance department has been working, I think I mentioned this, but a couple of you are gone, we've been working on getting all of our billing on one system, and also coming up with solutions for payments. And I think we've come up with a great answer. We have, all of the billing is currently being done on one system, where we're having a couple of issues with printing, so we can't print out, but all of the airport, all of the septic receiving, the water fill station, everything now is in our main finance software, so we're not going around looking for things, and we can run reports based on that. So really excited about that. I think, I think we will be up and live December first, but I want to say January first, just to give a little buffer, because I haven't actually seen the, I haven't seen a printed invoice yet, or statement, or anything like that. They're still printing a little funky, so I'd like to give, give a little buffer. And also, payments, web payments, we're working on solutions for that. We've been working with a vendor, staff has been doing training, we can do our credit cards through them, they can make payments on the website, there's a mobile app that can be used, there's pay by phone, there's all kinds of options using this vendor for forty dollars a month, and it just makes sense.
Are there security issues with that kind of thing that you're looking at? Whenever you do things online, there's always the possibility.
Right. I guess there would always be that, yes. This, this would go to the third-party vendor, though, because they would actually be making their transaction with the third-party vendor, and then they would be sending us what happened, what the transactions were.
And so presumably, the third-party vendor has security protocols?
They have the insurance.
Okay, okay.
So they have to meet certain security standards in the government's world.
The third-party provider.
Right.
And they're also a well-known government agency, credit card company, and they work specifically with our software vendor.
I just want to make sure the Russians aren't hacking your billing software. You know how they are.
I think you just about have to expect it.
I have a question for the finance.
All right.
Mid-year budget review, is that on the horizon?
I mean, I realize I'm not, I'm not going to be here to do it, but I'm just, I was thinking last...
I think it'll probably be in February, mid-February.
Checking.
Typically, when we have it, I mean, I'll obviously be looking at the numbers before then, but in order to get all the revenue and everything.
Right.
Kind of a guessing game up until year...
Right, the next sales tax report.
We just received a sales tax report for the second quarter, so...
You talking about impact of the freeway?
No, that won't show up for a bit yet.
I didn't.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, just wondering what those, I mean, I think the last report wasn't that great. I'm interested in the trends.
Anecdotally, I did talk to a fuel delivery truck that was delivering fuel to a certain gas station here in town, and asked them, have they noticed a difference since the freeway opened? They said they're delivering the exact amount of fuel they've been delivering before.
Right. There's, there's also a station that's undergoing some...
Clear one?
Yeah, so it's, it's down right now, so that could also be affecting a little bit.
Yeah, well, that's, it was just...
Is that station before or after twenty?
Yep. Anything for Human Resources? Thank you. Legal, legal? We do have closed session coming up. Public Safety, Jerry?
This will probably be the last time I address you, I believe, as your police chief. Halloween, Adrian went out with me, and we cruised the streets, and rather uneventful in some respects.
It was pouring.
Rainy.
Yeah, I think the weather, you know, while it may not be a friend to children trick-or-treating, it's always a policeman's friend, seems to keep folks down. We did have one traffic accident, I don't think it was related to Halloween, and I think that was it. So we had that, obviously, the bypass has slowed a lot of the truck traffic through town, so people are commenting they can cross the street. I don't think we've had too many collisions in town lately as opposed to before the bypass.
Is it true, I've heard reports, you know, on Facebook, that people are speeding down Main Street faster than they used to? Are you aware of anything like that?
Not specifically.
Have you been?
No, no.
I haven't noticed.
I think I've been going a little faster.
It seems like it.
Especially as the evening goes on, it seems like they're going faster.
So that's, that's kind of the change, the town's having to adapt to the change in the traffic pattern. I think that'll continue this, this whole year. I think we have winter to look at and how that affects us. Same thing, I've been kind of checking with the agencies, going, say, how's it going, et cetera, so.
Well, on the subject of, this might be your last report as Chief of Police, is there a interim situation?
We do have an interim plan, and the posting for the chief's position has gone out, and we'll be doing first interviews in mid-January.
The gentleman that was sitting next to me earlier, Scott Warnock, will be your interim chief.
How do I know that name? Where's he from?
He's Willets, he's...
No, I mean, did he work for the department?
Yeah, he's in a reserve for us, he was also at one point, he's a retired ABC investigator, he was the chief at ABC in San Rosa and one there. So he used to also work for the DA's office in the county, and when he retired from the state, I had recruited him to come work for us, and those capacities, so he's more than qualified to be our interim chief.
But he does not want, not necessarily...
He's a retiree, so he's limited by how many hours he can work, so he's actually the perfect...
It's going to be hard shoes to put.
Thank you. So that's part of it, and I thank you for approving our radio system. It's actually more radio heads, but I thought it could be put off for a while, and then we recently had a situation where somebody shut down one of the computers to the, and it didn't want to turn back on, and the radio people told me that if it didn't, you know, there's a chance they may not turn on in the future, so that's why.
When do you think you're going to have it in place?
After tomorrow, I'll put in for a PO, they have to order the parts, so I'm hoping that sometime in January, February.
Oh, that far?
Well, they got to order it, and drop ship it by freight, so that's the...
Thanks, Jerry. Community development, Dusty? You got enough for the day?
Would, on the subject of the Caltrans signage, as usual, it's never me that takes on something and deserves full credit for, you know, good things that happen. I want to give a special thanks out to Deb Meredith, she's the sign coordinator for Caltrans that we worked with to come up from Eureka, do a sign assessment, and then make recommendations to the Caltrans construction team. Special thanks to Jeff Wright, I believe he's the...
Resident engineer.
Resident engineer, thank you. For the project, he put the orders and construction of the signs on fast track, they paid a little bit extra to get the signs, and a little bit extra to get the contractors to put the signs in, so I want to give him a special thanks, as well as anyone else from Caltrans that I'm not aware of that helped establish that signage, which was so important to get before the bypass opened. There are some other signages that we're going to be looking to have Caltrans install, such as some logo signs, service signs on the north interchange. There's some technicality as to why that did not happen, certainly talking to Caltrans staff, they recognize the common sense behind having that, and so we're going to be looking to identify the process and make them aware that we're going to be looking to make application to get that additional signage, and then a couple other wayward signings off of the exits. Also want to thank the local newspapers to bring attention to the matter, as well as the council for passing a resolution to bring attention to the matter. I think it was all of those things that led to getting that additional signage, and probably my part was, you know, the smallest among that. So certainly want to direct your attention to others that deserve credit for that. Couple other things, our Wales to Trails grant did not get funded.
This is the second application?
This is our second go-around. Certainly, we've reached out to MCAG, Phil Allen folks, to get an understanding of maybe why that happened, learn any opportunities to strengthen our application and hedge our bets moving forward. I would expect that Willets would be submitting that grant in the next cycle, I'm not sure, I don't have those dates in front of me, but that was disappointing news. Didn't get discouraged, staff was actually able, and this happened on our own time, separate from our regular work hours, we were able to make application for this cool and connected grant through the EPA to establish better broadband in our downtown area, specifically designed to use broadband to enhance community development in rural areas of the nation, and specifically in downtown areas, and they had a strong preference to show that you've done other downtown revitalization efforts, and so it really tied into our Main Street, Streets and Alley Project efforts. It seemed that we really matched up with the intent of who they're looking to bring into the program and sponsor that level of planning. We received letters of support from Congressman Huffman's office, as well as many of the broadband groups up in Northern California, so we're able to get that submitted. It doesn't lock us into anything, it looks like, the sense I get from reading the application is, they're going to review initial applications and then get back with us if they want further information. So we're certainly, feel the council in detail as before moving forward, but we do have our fingers crossed that, that we might be able to participate in this program and help a lot of our local businesses out, sort of offset some of the damage that might happen during the bypass opening. We were able to finalize our airport layout plan and submit that to the FAA, they're currently reviewing it. That's good news, and that we're a little bit behind on getting that done, and that keeps us eligible for a lot of the grant monies that we currently receive to do improvements up at our airport. So that was good news as well. Continuing to work on our housing element, continuing to work on Streets and Alley's Main Street project, et cetera, continuing to get current planning applications in, continuing to receive interest in others establishing new businesses in the city. So every day seems to bring more positive ideas that our department's looking to support, and yeah, be happy about that.
Thanks for your efforts, Dusty. Appreciate it.
Your building official is out of town, in the training.
So we're going to jump to council and committee reports, anything from MCAG?
Nothing, did not meet.
LAFCO?
LAFCO met, nothing of note.
MTA?
Their last meeting was, I reported, was unable to go to, but it was two weeks ago.
EMSW?
Haven't met since the last meeting.
LEAG?
LEAG California Cities is having a reception dinner that you're all welcome to attend at the Grace Hudson Museum on November eighteenth, it's a Friday. Yeah, I just want to say for the new council members coming on, I have found them to be an excellent resource, and this is our Northern California chapter, so these are the city council members and mayors from Lake County all the way up to...
Crescent City. Nothing in water and wastewater, revited?
Not met.
Finance is not met?
Feels like we have, but no.
Anything in EDFC?
They are meeting tomorrow down at the Ukiah office, and it should be interesting.
NCRAs?
NCRA met today in Ukiah, which was nice, I didn't have to go quite so far. We were able to take a tour of the courthouse facility, and that is moving ahead quite nicely, the new courthouse facility. Other than that, they're still dealing with these fuel cars down in Shellville, it's an unfortunate distraction. There's other things that we've got to be working on.
I think you ought to invite them to do a tour of the rail yard in Willets.
Yeah, I could. Yeah, I could.
What's going on with your pot policy?
Well, we had a working group meeting yesterday and we're gathering more information. We were talking about the impact of indoor grows regarding water and electricity and things like that, so we're gathering information about what those impacts would be. The report that, that we received is that we have sufficient water, that, that's not a problem. We're operating, I believe, at one-third capacity and we're in good shape. One of the, we had a guest with us who is a local marijuana authority, I guess that would be the best way to do it, and, and he gave us some good information, I mean, stuff that I was interested in. We talked about the cultivation, the outlook for cultivation and the feeling was that we're looking at a short-term window, probably three years, and at the end of three years, the feeling is, is that there's going to be so much marijuana being grown that the price is just going to drop dramatically and especially with the vote yesterday on the state legalizing it, it, it looks like there'll be more and more and it could very well be that, especially for an indoor growing operation, if the price drops as much as it's expected to drop, it just won't pencil out anymore. So, there's something to be mindful of. The other, the other issue that's associated with, with the indoor grows, of course, is the electricity and even though it's not our electricity, it's not cities' utilities that are being used, it still is an environmental issue. And I've come to believe that folks who live in Willets are kind of environmentally active and aware, so it's something we have to be mindful of. But a suggestion was made that, I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around it, but it sounds fascinating. It's, it has to do with, with the carbon credits, carbon offsets, which personally I hate the idea of because somebody here can use a lot of fossil fuel and then he sends money to the East Coast to offset it, which I never thought that was a good idea, but-
This was a local offset.
We could do our local offset, so if the city, for example, was to build a big solar array enough to offset the electricity that was being used in this facility, or at least part of it, we could sell, and, and they would, they would be, the solar array wouldn't be supplying electricity to the grow facility, it would be supplying electricity to city facilities or wherever, but it would be, it would be generating solar electricity and we could sell carbon offsets to this outfit here, that would, that would be a revenue stream to the city. So, it, it's, it's kind of convoluted and I think, I know Dusty got it, I mean, he's, he's smarter than I am.
Well, it was Berkeley's, that's what Berkeley is doing.
Yes, but it was an interesting concept. And we don't have to get into details right now, but it was an interesting concept, a different approach to kind of dealing with some of these, these sticky issues.
Rationalize an irrational act.
Yes, and it would be a long, it would be a long-term-
Yeah.
-electrical infrastructure investment on a short-term fee.
Yeah, and, and we're talking about limiting the size of facilities, the numbers of them and that sort of thing. And is my, yeah, we, we've had three group meetings already, we've had one public meeting, we're going to have another one next Tuesday, and I believe at that point, we'll be ready to start to craft a report to present to the council, that would be the, the first step towards, you know, creating an ordinance. And, and I'm looking at sometime in January to have that ready.
Okay, thank you. Any council member reports and recommendations? Good and Welfare? Oh, hold it, excuse me. We got a couple ordinances. I've got some Good and Welfare. I think there's more, probably. So, we have, I think we need to do these individually, different, different topics. So, we have a reintroduction of an ordinance that passed here a while back regarding a deposit on construction and demolition recycling. Is that right, Adrian?
Yes.
Do you want to just clarify that, what happened? I was not at that meeting, I read the agenda summary, but maybe I gave something else.
So, in early 2013, these two ordinances were introduced and pursuant to state requirements, they were published in the newspaper after introduction as a proposed ordinance and when they were scheduled for adoption. They were then brought forward for adoption and those adoptions, the council voted to adopt both of these, but the noticing that is required after adoption in the newspaper did not occur. And it was an oversight at the time when we were going through a lot of transition and not, not everyone was quite up to speed on their new, you know, new duties, myself included. So, this is a cleanup effort. You know, we, we just have to go back and reintroduce them and re-adopt them.
Do you know if they were, what the votes were back then?
Four to zero.
Four to zero, I wasn't here. The, but the ordinance is, was altered to remove a deposit requirement, a pre-destruction deposit requirement, that's what's the change in the ordinance. That's what is being put forth, so.
I'll move that we reintroduce the ordinance of 2013-02, waive the reading and direct staff to bring the ordinance back on the December 6 meeting.
Is there a second to that?
One second.
Any public comment on that? Roll call, roll please.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yeah, I have some problems with the recycling ordinance, but I, I don't have a problem with the redaction of the fee, so I'm going to stick with it.
So, is that a yes or a no?
I said yes.
Okay.
So, the next one is, that gives limited authority to the city manager to sign contracts up to $45,000 from the existing $10,000 limit, right?
And, and this was to be consistent with?
Right, actually, there had been a previous ordinance that authorized the city manager to approve construction contracts up to $45,000.
Right.
That passed and that became an effective valid ordinance and then we realized, well, that's somewhat inconsistent with another provision in the Willets Municipal Code that says that the manager's authority is limited to $10,000. So, we're just adding this red highlighted language, except as provided at Willets Municipal Code, section 3.09, the city manager must obtain council approval for expenditures in excess of $10,000. It's just to keep our, our codes consistent.
I'd look for a motion on that, someone? Madge moves, is there a second?
Second.
On seconds, any public comment on this? Roll call, roll please.
Yes, I'm Shannon.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, Good and Welfare, anybody got Good and Welfare?
I want to thank the city's participant, participation in the subliminal bypass event. I know there was concern in the community about it being a celebration, about structure and I really felt like it was a celebration for the town. I was very impressed with how the chamber pulled it off. It was, it was quite well done and I had heard comments from people who came from some distance to attend and they, they were really impressed by it. And now, this has happened, this thing that we've, you know, put so much energy for and against for so many years, like, it's open. So, I have driven it a couple times and it really is a beautiful view of our valley.
Yeah, I've driven it a few times. Anybody else finding themselves counting cars on it? I find myself counting the cars.
No, I find myself driving really slow.
And then I find myself, when I follow people off the off-ramp, especially or onto the, you know, trying to figure out where they're going, you know? Or coming down Sherwood Road in the morning, I'm behind four or five cars and they don't go to the interchange, they go through town. I'm curious, well, are they going to go all the way through town and get on the interchange or are they actually local traffic and so? I don't know, I just find some of those things interesting, so I've just been following that myself.
Yeah, and-
It's about 40 cars, 36 to 40 cars, and when I hit the southern interchange to the northern interchange, count them yourselves, tell me what you come up with. I'm running in vehicles, I'm counting every vehicle's going.
Divide that into the cost of the bypass, it's a lot per-.
Boy, it's, it is a big improvement downtown.
Well, I, I was kind of surprised, you know, I was, I wasn't sure what to expect as far as noise in our neighborhood and I haven't heard a thing.
I think you've got a good hillside. And I spoke to Howwagonet today who said he timed both routes, he lives in Brooktrails and he timed from the interchange through town, it was like six point something minutes, it was exactly the same in both options.
Through town or on the-
But that is a kind of given amount, which shouldn't alter too drastically on any given day, whereas the in-town will not always be six point whatever. Thought that was interesting, that it was the same.
So, I wore my, I wore my bluegrass jacket tonight, so I wouldn't forget to mention that we, we are putting this Rotary sponsoring a bluegrass show at the Center for the Arts on Sunday afternoon, 3 o'clock. Group sidelined from down in the real bluegrass country is playing, great group, so I have tickets, Willets Rotarians have tickets, tickets at Willets Furniture and at Willets Redwood, as well as Rotarians. So, anyway, anybody that would care to join us on Sunday afternoon, I'd love to have you.
I do want to add one more thing, this isn't so much exciting for most people, but the Willet Center for the Arts now has gutters, rain gutters on them, which is huge, it allows the landscaping to go forward and I just want to thank the city and partners for that. And the show right now is really excellent. You should come to the bluegrass show and come a little bit early and see the, see the art exhibits.
Yes, it is an excellent-
Okay, we have a closed session this evening, one item negotiation with real property concerning Caltrans and property being-